All right. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, February 10, 2025. I will now call the meeting to order. It's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Rojas, can you lead that today?
Raise your hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anna, will you please do voice roll call?
Chair Harlan?
Here.
Vice Chair Zick?
Here.
Commissioner Rojas?
President.
Commissioner Klepak?
President.
Commissioner Andrade?
Here.
Commissioner Dixon?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
All right. All present and accounted for. We do not have any announcements or presentations, so we'll move straight to public comment. Public comments are heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within our jurisdiction as Planning Commission. I'll open up public comment, and if you'd like to speak, please come to the podium. If you're participating by Zoom, please use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen, and if you're joining us on your phone and you'd like to speak, please press star nine. And I see one member of the public coming ahead. Good evening, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Fitzpatrick, East Side. East Side's the best side. So I'm keen on process improvement. We have a new commission here. We really need to get better. I think we have a couple of applications tonight that we're going to demonstrate some opportunities for improvement in the process. Commissioner Dixon, I can tell you, I just Googled, tested again. It goes to all the applications. It's so frustrating for me, too, because every time I do it and forget, and it's just a long, a long process to get to the relevant information. And I think we need to really focus on this. I said the process is broken. The speaker before me last, last time said the process is broken. It's just taking too long. There's unnecessary delays. We need to improve communication. There are some shining lights. I think that, you know, up on the fourth floor, where most of my projects are bottlenecked, up in Public Works, we have hired an assistant city engineer with 30 years' experience to try and help, you know, unstuck the bottleneck, which I think is awesome. But I want you guys to start looking at things like in the conditions. There's all these conditions, and then you go through, and then all of a sudden, everyone's getting whacked by Public Works for an encroachment permit to redo the drive aisles, and these are really, really expensive and timely things. Why aren't they part of the conditions? Why aren't the applicants being made aware of this time and money? I mean, I could be up here all night saying these things. I just hope everybody from staff to commission, all the way up in the council nods their head that says it's not, it's not working. We have to be more collaborative. I can tell you right now, I am tired of coming here and asking for this stuff and recommending that the city meet with the applicants and do something about it. I'm forming a group. I invite everybody who's listening to me, commissioners, applicants, to come, let's meet together, not, not to just yell at the city, but to really formulate some, some solid recommendations for improvement, and then we'll ask the city to meet with us. That's the way it worked in cannabis, and until, unless and until we actively sought that discussion, were we able to have meaningful discussions, right? It's just a cultural thing here at City Hall. It's an ivory tower with a moat around it, and we need to change the way that this is done. Good luck in your meeting. We need to get these, the plans in your hands sooner. I'll be looking for commissioners, and if there's an abundance of questions here on the dais that shouldn't be here because you didn't get the things in time to have timely abilities to ask for staff, that's an issue. You're wasting the public's time. You're wasting my time because staff isn't giving you enough time to get the, to get good quality staff reports and interact. We got to do the city's business. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Humphries.
Good evening, Commissioner Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. Welcome to the new members, and hopefully you have a fun time up here. I know we all do, so continue to be. I'm still patiently waiting to see the reduction in rents here in Costa Mesa as promised by Major K. Major K indicated that, that Major Y was at fault for all those rents being so high. And of course, Costa Mesa, as we've already know, is the second highest in the nation to rent a three-bedroom house, second highest in the nation. But places like Newport Beach are even higher places, and it's not a same-sized city. That's the reason it's not in that, that group. Huntington Beach is roughly the same. Irvine's roughly the same. And those cities don't have a Major Y, so why are their rents as high as those in Costa Mesa? They don't have Major Y. Interesting. And are we likely to see affordable housing of any significance to affect the housing rents in Costa Mesa? Probably not, because the council approved in-Luffy half of what their own paid advisor suggested as a cost, which was still somewhat low, but that's neither important. They did half of that suggestion, which of course means that the developer is going to opt to use the in-Luffy, pay the city. That's wonderful. We'll have that money. Unfortunately, we won't have enough to actually do projects, so we'll put that money away in other different ways of trying to accomplish the same goal. I understand the process. I understand it thoroughly. I'll continue to wait patiently to see those rents just flatten out. Let's forget about getting lower. Just flatten them out. That's what I would love to see, that we have enough affordable housing that the people that work in this community actually can live in this community. You know, nurses, EMTs, fire staff, police staff. It'd be nice to have them be able to live here, too. And if you look at the numbers, you have to earn about $80,000 a year just to be at the median, which means everybody else is below. So you guys think about it, please. I would appreciate it if at least the commission would try to make sure that things like affordable housing and things like making sure that the rents that were promised on Major K to come down actually live up to the Major K promises, by the way, that were fostered by the city as well as the developers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in chambers? Anna, do we have anybody on phone or Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'll close public comment. Let's move on to Planning Commission comments and suggestions. We'll start to my right. Commissioner Rojas?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Klepak?
None for me. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, I wanted to first welcome everybody. So great to see a good turnout, as Commissioner Zick always highlights great turnout tonight. So thank you all for participating in the process. But I just wanted to touch upon some of the points from the public, the community that just stepped up. So I will, it will not go unnoticed that staff did deliver the binder earlier this week, so shout out to the team for doing that. Thank you so much, staff, for delivering. It did add a little extra time. And, and I will also want to share on that is, I think it's, it's helpful to have it early to dive into it. Can be very complex conversations, but also for our audience, for folks that are learning about the process online, for our community in general. I think some of the conversations that we lead as commissioners here are meaningful. They're educational, right? So that the next applicant that comes up understands a little what kind of questions to anticipate. You know, the community can be better informed of the process. So I think as commissioners, we can all, and the department, we can kind of strike a healthy balance. We're not going to go line by line redlining everything, and, but I think some of that it's, it really helps with educating the community. Yeah, so that's all I, I wanted to highlight, and then I definitely want to acknowledge our second speaker. That's definitely a conversation that needs to continue to be had about affordability in our community and really the impact of, you know, kind of the buzz that we're hearing at the national level on, you know, private entities that have nothing to do with housing, just gobbling up all the private-public housing for the community. And so it'd be, that's a really interesting point, something to explore, like, is that happening here? Are we having private equity gobble up private, public housing, private homes that make it unaffordable for folks? So we'd love to kind of open up. So thank you so, so much for bringing that issue up.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you so much, and thanks for coming. It is nice to see a nice full crowd in here. It really is encouraging. So just a brief follow-up on the comments from the public speakers. I know that Mr. Inloes had talked about surveying some of the users when he gave his TESA presentation, and maybe just wanted to ask staff or put it in staff's mind or the chair as well. I don't know if a study session is the right venue for sort of a, kind of a coming together about the pain points in TESA, or if it's more of a sort of an informal survey of users or, I'll leave that up to staff as the best way to accomplish that. But it would be nice to, you know, find out from the power users where the pain points are and see if we can direct resources there. And regarding, you know, I've been reading some trends recently about post-fires in Los Angeles, and I think that we're, there's going to be a considerable amount of pressure on rents and available properties for a little while based on folks moving down from there who no longer have homes. And Costa Mesa and Orange County are very desirable places to live that are similar in a lot of ways. So I too hope for affordability, but I think we may have a challenge on that one, but thanks very much.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes. First, I want to recognize that this month is Black History Month and recognize the contributions of Black Americans to our city, to our state, and to our country, and thank everyone for recognizing it, and I do believe the city council will issue a proclamation at their next meeting. Community announcements. Tomorrow, February 11th at 6:00 PM, OCTA is hosting a community meeting regarding their new wave cards. Instead of paying by cash or by buying some paper passes, folks will be allowed to just tap a new card on OCTA buses, I believe, starting this summer. So if you want to learn more about that, you can go tomorrow at 6:00 PM to the Norma Herzog Community Center. If you've been to Los Angeles, it's like their tap cards. On Wednesday night, if you're free and you're interested in park planning, you can email the Coastal Corridor Alliance and see if there is still spots available for planning the Randall Preserve. That's their event, and they have limited availability, so email them, see if there's still spots available. I'll be going. And I wanted to end by recognizing and memorializing Professor Donald Shoup. He was a UCLA professor who wrote a lot about parking. His 2005 book, The High Cost of Free Parking, should be required reading for all planners, even though it is 800 pages, in which case I'll let people just read the summary. But his work is something that I bring up probably most meetings, and I think it's something that should be applied. Hopefully, when we review our parking ordinance, like we're supposed to do for the housing element, we can really bring in some of his work, because I think that Professor Shoup has contributed greatly to local parking reform, to state-level parking reform, and parking all across the country. So he was a great voice, and it's very sad that he died a few days ago. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Martinez, Vice Chair Zick, any comments?
Oh, I can't resist. First of all, I always appreciate Commissioner Martinez's community announcements. I think they're, I find them interesting, and they're informative for the public, especially if you're not already tuned into the Costa Mesa Minute or other publications that the city puts out with similar announcements. So I do appreciate that, Commissioner Martinez. So with regard to a couple of the public commenters, would first say to Mr. Fitzpatrick, count me in on your informal working group. I'm interested. You know how to get a hold of me. For staff, I know that this is not the forum, and we probably are not the body, to scrutinize, micromanage, fine-tune, and improve things like TESA. But you did give us an opportunity to get a presentation on it, and so that kind of tied us in a little bit to what the public is saying about TESA. And I guess I would just encourage staff to really find an effective way to be responsive to the comments that came out of our last meeting. I think you are, or at least you intend to be, and I would just encourage you to go a step further, maybe than you currently are. And then with regard to Mr. Humphrey, not everybody hears him on a regular basis. I think his comments about a recent city ordinance lowering rents in the city, or his expectation that that might start happening, might, might have been a little bit on the facetious side. If somebody actually thinks the rents are going to start going down in the city as a result of some ordinance we passed, that's probably not the case. Rents are responsive to market conditions, and I would kind of hope that the government is not so intrusive into the market that we would be affecting rents or prices one way or the other. I'm also very pleased to see so many people in the audience. I can't wait to see you all here again in a couple of weeks at our next meeting. Or, or not. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you. Well, in the interest of moving this along, I have no comments tonight, so let's get to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar tonight. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, will be acted upon in one motion. There's no separate discussion unless a member of the Planning Commission staff or public requests a specific item to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be discussed and voted upon immediately following Planning Commission action on the remainder of the consent calendar. So no items have been pulled tonight. So do I have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move to it.
Okay.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Move by Commissioner Dixon. Do a second, Commissioner Andrade?
Sure.
Okay. Let's call for the question.
Oh, sorry. When? Commissioner Martinez, if you don't mind recording. That motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Great. Minutes from last meeting are approved. We have three public hearing items tonight. One, public hearing three, actually has been requested by the appellant to be continued. So if the commission doesn't mind, I wouldn't mind hearing that now to have a motion to continue that item.
Do we have to reorder the agenda first?
We, we can take a motion to reorder if you'd like.
I move to reorder the agenda to hear public hearing item number three now.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Dixon. Let's take a vote on that.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Great. Do I hear a motion to continue the item? Sorry, I think we need to reset this. Okay, now try again. All right. Motion by Commissioner Martinez.
I move to continue the item to the Planning Commission meeting of February 24th, 2025.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Prior to the vote, Chair, if the Planning Commission's intention is to continue this, the better practice, so that does not be re-notice, would be to open the public hearing and then continue it. Otherwise, the city council, the Planning Commission, the planning staff will have to re, redo the public notice.
Okay. Let's open the public hearing then. Does anybody want to comment on this? All right. Seeing none. We have, you want me to leave that open? Tarquin?
Yes, I recommend you leave it open. Continue it to a date certain.
Okay, so we'll continue it to February 24th, 2025. Do we have a second on the motion? Commissioner Klepak? Okay. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Let's move on to public hearing item number one. Commissioners, first, any ex parte communications to report? Commissioner Klepak? Actually, hold on that a second. Anna, will you read the title first?
Public hearing item number one, conditional use permit PCUP-24-0009 to amend conditions for a previously approved conditional use permit PA-17-15 for a dog daycare and boarding facility with grooming services, Hydrant Pet Hotel at 776 West 17th Street. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
All right. Thank you, Anna. Commissioner Klepak?
Yes. I went to the subject property on Saturday, and I spoke with the manager, who was very professional and accommodating. I also went to some of the neighboring businesses. I went to the business at 1718 Placentia around back that made a public comment. They were not there. Their posted hours of operation were Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, so they were closed on the weekend when I was there. I did try going directly next door to Woolsey Construction. Also, nobody there. I did, however, walk to the back where there was a business, where two of the business owners immediately next to the open dog area were outside. I asked them if they had any concerns, and they said, no, no issues with noise or smell, and they were very good neighbors.
Commissioner Klepak, we can, if you don't mind, get to that during our public comment period.
I was just listing everybody I talked to.
Okay. Appreciate that. All right. Any other commissioners with the ex parte commission?
I have one more. I went and did a tour today.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez?
I biked to the site on February 2nd and spoke to no one there.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's turn it over to Mr. Ramondo. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Harlan. My name is Jeffrey Ramondo, Assistant Planner at the Economic and Development Services Department. And the item for you, I have you before you tonight is an amendment to existing conditional use permit for a dog daycare and boarding facility called Hydrant Pet Hotel. A little history on the business. In 2017, the Planning Commission approved conditional use permit PA-1715 to allow the establishment of a dog daycare and boarding facility. Now, the applicant's request is for an amendment to the existing CUP, specifically to modify three conditions of approval. The modifications involve increasing the capacity of dogs and cats for the daycare and boarding services, reduce employee-to-pet ratio, and increase hours of operation. For a little background, the subject property, 776 West 17th Street, is located not too far from the intersection of Placentia and 17th Street. The site you see, you can see boxed in yellow, is located on the north end of 17th Street and is the third lot east of the intersection. The site is zoned MG, which stands for general industrial, and surrounding the site are industrial complexes to the west, east, and south. Neighboring the rear of the property to the north is an electrical supply store called Hank's Electric Supply. And within vicinity to the west are a couple existing food uses. And here are the site and floor plans of the business. The site contains 19 parking spaces and a bike rack on site. The business has two indoor dog daycare areas and one outdoor fenced daycare area. Within the business, there is a grooming room, a cat room, and there's also an area of pet suites as part of their boarding services. Now, the applicant has requested a modified condition of approval numbers one, nine, and 12 of their CUP. In the following slides, the corresponding conditions will be displayed with the requested Starting with condition of approval number one, the original condition of approval was italicized with the proposed modifications represented with either a strike through or a bold underline. Now, condition of approval number one establishes that the use shall be limited to the type of operation described in the staff report, as well as the following items that are bulleted below. The hours of operations was originally established from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Now, the applicant is proposing to increase their closing hour from 7:00 PM to now 9:00 PM. And the applicant's intent was to align and be consistent with the pickup and drop-off hours established under condition of approval number 17. Now, further modifications include the capacity of animals served to increase from 70 to 150 total dogs and cats, and also to include accessory retail sales as part of their business. Now, the modification to include the pickup and drop-off service in this condition is just for confirmation that the service is an allowed activity. Now, overall, staff is supportive of the proposed modifications as requested by the applicant. Moving on to condition of approval number nine, the condition requires that the business be conducted in a manner that would allow the quiet enjoyment of the surrounding neighborhood. So the condition continues on to provide operational measures that may be necessary to comply with the requirement, such as reducing number of dogs, limiting outdoor breaks, and number and frequency of walks. Now, the applicant is requesting to modify the condition to remove language pertaining to the operational measure examples. However, staff is not supportive of the modification, is recommending that the condition remain in its original version. However, staff acknowledges that dog walking is not allowed per existing conditional approval number six, so staff is proposing an amendment to the draft resolution Exhibit B to amend condition of approval nine to strike out the language, and I quote, "number and frequency of walks," end quote, at the end of the condition. Now, this amendment is just due to dog walking already not allowed per condition of approval number six. So in other words, the condition should be read as shown on this slide. Onto the final condition to be amended. Condition of approval number 12 requires that staff or caretaker shall remain on the premises overnight with the pets. It further establishes that the business shall have an employee-to-pet ratio, one staff member for every 15 dogs at a minimum. Now, the applicant is requesting to remove language requiring the employee-to-pet ratio. Now, staff recommendation is that rather than removing the employee-to-pet ratio, staff recommends the language to be revised and be read as follows. A staff or caretaker shall remain on the premises overnight with the pets. An employee ratio to animal shall be provided at all times to ensure that the business operates safely, with both animal and employees properly protected, and the business operates without neighborhood impacts. Now, although a specified ratio is not established in this revised condition, the intent of revision is that the ratio is to be applied at the business's own discretion, allowing the applicant to manage their employee numbers without city involvement. Now, the overall proposed amendments as conditions will continue to be compatible with the surrounding industrial and commercial businesses and will continue to not be materially detrimental to other properties within the area. With that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is currently exempt from CEQA and to approve the application subject to conditions of approval. This concludes my presentation. I have the answer to any questions you may have, and the applicant, D.C., and business owner, Brooke Badford, are also intended to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ramondo, for that presentation. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Martinez?
Of course. So for condition of approval number nine, the examples that are in there, such as reducing the number of dogs, limiting outdoor breaks, does, do we need to include that? Is there a legal difference between having them and not having them?
From a legal perspective, it's not, there's not really a legal requirement, so to speak. It's a, it's a standard requirement where we give examples of what an applicant can do to avoid potential impacts. It's something that we do standard with a lot of CUPs. If the commission removed it per the applicant request, it really would not make an impact to the project, and we've got conditions, alternative conditions, that would basically fulfill any of the gap, but really, all that is, is just a suggestion. So other things could be handled as well.
Okay. Regarding condition of approval number 12, so... So, staff's intent with the language is also that the business kind of just does what they want to do with, they set their own employee ratio. But by being a dog daycare business, they're going to be doing that anyways. So, why include the language about an employee ratio at all?
So, the reason and the purpose for that condition is to be able to justify if there needs to be a ratio in the future where we are realizing that there is a lack of oversight from the employees. We could refer to this condition of approval and indicate that the ratio needs to be increased based on what their existing ratio is. So, it's one of those things where we're projecting out. This was actually a requirement from the Planning Commission's first review. It wasn't part of the original application. It was a condition of approval that required during the public hearing. But staff believes that just having the potential to require it if needed is enough to not, and stay out of the whole ratio of numbering the applicant to a ratio that really, staff doesn't really know what is the right one. And plus, the applicant has operated the business for several years now and probably knows best.
Okay. And then, I just want to confirm that there have been no previous complaints against this applicant, other than the public comments we received.
That's correct. There's no additional public comments, other than what was in the attachment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners? Commissioner Zeke?
Thank you. Let me start, Mr. Ramondo, by asking you about this public hearing. You indicated on page five that if an applicant wants to amend their CUP, it requires a public hearing. And I just want to make sure I'm clear about that. So, the zoning administrator would not have authority to have approved these changes that were requested. It would have to be Planning Commission public hearing. Is that correct?
There's a provision in our code for making any amendments to conditional, existing conditional use permit. If it is considered as a minor amendment, then the approval, I mean, the decision could be left up to the zoning administrator. But if it's concerned more than just a minor amendment, then it'll be up to the same decision process as it was originally approved. So, Planning Commission was the original approval.
Okay, so what was it about this request? Or which one of the three requests struck staff as being not minor in requiring a public hearing?
So, the, I'll try to take that question, since I'm the zoning administrator. The real issue was changing a condition that the Planning Commission required as a condition of approval during the public hearing. That gave staff a little bit of concerns.
Yeah, okay. That makes sense to me. Thank you. My next question on page four, you discuss their operations. Phase one, they occupied a portion of the building. Then, phase two, they took over the entire building. My question is, did their original CUP grant them the authority to occupy the entire building for their operation?
Yes, as indicated in the original staff report, it indicated that they would occupy the rear unit, and then, within three years, they would occupy the front unit as well.
And they had the full approval to do that?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, on the staff report, page six, for the condition of approval number one, you added the language of pickup and drop-off service. And you indicate in the paragraph below that that pickup and drop-off services was included in the original project approval. So, I was curious why it was being added? And is it simply because it was an oversight to have not included that in the condition of approval language?
So, that service in the original approval, it was detailed in the original staff report, but was not explicitly called out under the listed bulleted points under that condition. So, it was just a request from the applicant, just to have that included as well, just for assurance.
Minor cleanup, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Anyone else? Okay. I will now open the public hearing and ask if the applicant is present. If they are, please come to the podium. All right.
Thank you, Chair Harland. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dave C. I'm the agent representing the owners of Hydrant Pet Hotel, Megan Flynn and Brooke Bradford.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
So, thank you for giving us your name on the record. The second question I need to ask is, have you read the staff report and the conditions of approval?
Yes, sir, I have. And I was going to discuss that a little bit, but yes, I have read it carefully.
I'll ask if you agree with them, but I know you're going to detail your answer here.
I was going to cover that. Thank you for asking, though. So, I'm going to provide a project overview, and we did prepare a presentation that we'd like to show you with nine slides, hopefully covering all the issues raised by the adjacent neighbor to the north, and also answer some of the questions from the commission. So, my goal is to finish in three minutes, but it may go slightly over. So, with the chair's permission, would that be okay?
Yes.
I'll be careful not to repeat Planning Staff's presentation, and I'll be very concise, but it could go slightly over.
You're welcome to go a couple more minutes, please.
I always like to ask for permission. Thank you. So, the business has been open since 2018. And just to confirm what Planning Staff said, their intention was just to occupy the rear tenant space, and the CUP did allow them to expand into the front. The business did succeed over the years, and they did need that additional space, which the CUP did allow. And just to reiterate, there's been no complaints for seven years, so they've operated, we believe, you know, very responsibly and with no impacts on neighbors. We did become aware of a neighbor's letter, two letters that were submitted. One was just from a citizen, not necessarily a neighbor, and there were just generic comments, which, of course, we still take seriously. But the neighbor to the north did have some concerns about noise and odor. So, the owners did reach out to this neighbor by email, because they have communicated with them by email in the past and gave them, you know, kind of some mitigation and operational measures that they believe would address their concerns. The neighbor did respond back and said, "Well, I was just kind of venting, and that was a problem about a year ago, so there's no problems now." Which, we're not sure why the letter came in recently, but that, kind of for the record, was her response. So, with that, I wanted to show nine slides, and Jeffrey, if you can pull it up? Yep, there it is. Wanted to kind of talk about some of the measures that the owners are proposing that they already have in place, but they'll add some more operational functions that we believe would address the neighbor's concerns. So, Jeffrey, if you can go to the next slide. This is just a list of letters from happy customers, and just like staff said, there's been no complaints in seven years, and the customers are very happy, and obviously, their business has grown, so that's testimony to that. Next slide. So, these are just some cleaning measures for the outdoor play yard, which got quite a bit of attention in the neighbor's letter. But this is a list of what the owners are proposing in addition to what they're already doing. We don't believe it's necessarily needed, but they're willing to do it just to be a good neighbor. Spray the turf down, which is what the ground covering is in that outdoor play yard in the back, every two hours with the veterinary-grade cleaning and odor elimination solution. Just wanted to add to that, they're kind of limited as to what type of solution they can use to be safe for the animals. They can't use harsh chemicals, so, but it does mitigate the odor quite a bit. They will pick up pet waste as soon as possible, deep clean with a turf machine. And there is some images that we'll show in future slides, showing what those machines are. Deep clean with a turf machine at closing. Power wash the perimeter of turf weekly to avoid any buildup or residue that the turf machine misses or cannot reach. There has been concerns from the neighbor about, especially during the summer, when it's very, very hot out, that it could get worse. But they're proactively addressing that by providing more shade and keeping the yard cooler with umbrellas and sun shades. And they have already replaced the turf after five years, even though the manufacturer recommended 10. So, they're trying to get out in front of that and just put fresh turf out in the yard. Next slide, please. And these are the machines, the images, kind of shows what, you know, methods of cleaning. And these are not cheap. They're very expensive, and not all pet boarding businesses have this. But they have invested in these machines and believe they're very effective. Next slide. In terms of indoor play yard cleaning measures, and what I'm referring to is, there's boarding rooms for the pets, but there's also, I believe the Commissioner Klepak went out there and saw it, there's very large spacious rooms with high ceilings that I would call semi-enclosed. So, there's a lot of air that flows through these large rooms, because they have roll-up doors. So, that, you know, makes it more pleasing for the pets and the employees. And that's what I'm talking about when I say indoor yard cleaning. They vacuum twice daily, spot mop any urine or other waste, use floor cleaning machine midday, and also use it at closing. They do wipe the walls and gates and fences down frequently. They lift the rubber around the perimeter where urine may leak under the rubber. They ensure essential oil scent diffusers are filled and working. Air conditioning units, filters are changed routinely. The fans are on to circulate air. There are some live plants, you know, throughout the facility that they believe will help oxygenate air. There is a UV light system in the central heating air system to kill any airborne pathogens. And the small dog side, which is the south side, which is that new area they expanded into, has fresh pet-specific grass delivered weekly. Next slide. And this is just some more images showing that fresh grass area that's changed out. And this is a good depiction of the type of room I was describing, with a very high ceiling. And whoever took this picture behind them are the big roll-up doors, so that allows a lot of air to flow through this room. But you can see how spacious it is, and then you can see videos of the employees cleaning the area. Next slide. And in terms of general facility cleaning, other than the play yards, overnight staff deep cleans the facility nightly. Daytime employees clean thoroughly. All boarding suites are cleaned daily. The boarding suites are deep cleaned every weekend. The bed covers are washed after each boarding checkout, unless there's an accident. Blankets are washed after dogs are checked out, and they have a turn-down service nightly. And next slide, if there is one. I believe this is it. Although, their main concern from the neighbors is generally odors, but they did mention noise, and the owners are trying to address that as well, to make sure it's minimized. And what they do, the staff there is highly trained to use, for example, verbal voice correction, distraction techniques, use short breaks in boarding rooms or timeout stall, walk dogs on lead in the yard. And we're aware there's a condition of approval not to walk the dogs outside of the property, but this is within the property. Calming down by petting, recall training, and basically kicking out or removing dogs that are constant barkers or disruptive to their facility. And next slide. And last, the staff, like I said, is trained to keep the place running smoothly and clean and well-maintained. And they keep a checklist for all the employees to make sure these are all adhered to. And that concludes the presentation. And kind of getting back to the chair's question, we have reviewed the staff report, conditions of approval, and we are in concurrence with Planning Staff. We appreciate staff working closely with us and collaboratively to basically get us to the finish line tonight, and we believe we're in agreement. We weren't in the beginning, but now we are, and we appreciate that. Just a comment on condition number one. Originally, the owners proposed 70 dogs, or dogs and cats, not really knowing if that would be the right number. It was just an estimate at that time, and only half of the facility was going to be occupied. Well, the business grew and succeeded, and that number wasn't quite enough. Even though staff is, in concurrence, at 150 is appropriate, that could be misleading. It's not always 150. It's, the number fluctuates by the hour. There could be some overlap, where some dogs aren't picked up, some are brought in, but then the other ones are picked up. So, the number changes all the time. I believe today, there were 65 there, for example. That's kind of an average number. So, it's not like there's 150 there all the time. So, just wanted to make sure the commission knows that's how it works there. And lastly, just want to say, we hope the neighbor's concerns were addressed with the presentation. The owners really, really made a concerted effort to address that. This is an industrial area, so we believe it's very appropriate in this area. There are noises and smells from other businesses around there. We believe it kind of fits in, but they're doing their best to make sure it doesn't impact neighbors. And with that, that's my concluding comments, and I'm available for questions. And the owners are here, too, if you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. C. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? I don't see anybody on my right. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you. Just a very quick question regarding the ratio. So, is that anticipated to be something where the applicant or the owners would determine that if this many dogs are on site, we need, or cats, we need this many employees? Or is it completely dependent upon the population? And is it something that's fluctuating all the time? Because the condition reads that it shall be provided at all times, so I would assume that there'd be some sort of indicator on site of how many are supposed to be there if there's a certain number of dogs? Or is that a judgment thing, or how do you anticipate that working, determining the ratio?
Yeah, thank you for your question. Good question. So, originally, they did propose a 1 to 15 ratio, thinking that was appropriate, but that was only an estimate. It turns out, that really isn't an appropriate number, and the owners, you know, has been very successful. The business has grown. Customers are very happy. So, now they have a better idea of how it functions well, and they have a pretty good idea of how that works. But 1 to 15 doesn't always work. You know, they might have that at times, other times not. For example, if the, you know, there's more dogs in one yard than another, one might need more attention than the other, and then the 1 to 15 ratio might be less. But it's, they know how their business works well, and they know how it functions well. And we appreciate staff agreeing that kind of let them decide that. Does that answer the question?
It does. I was, I'm trying to determine if it's something where we need to amend that condition very, very slightly to say at the operator's discretion or something. Because the way it reads now, it sort of seems like you're going to walk in, and there's a ratio provided of, you know, if there's this many pets, there should be this many employees, regardless of whether it's 1 to 15, or 1 to 30, or 1 to 50. So, I just want to clarify that a little bit, but thank you. You answered my question.
Yeah, Commissioner Dixon, if I could add, we would be in agreement with that. That actually would be better for us, obviously, to leave it up to the owners. And then, I think there were some comments or questions about conditions nine and 12, and whether they're even needed. If the commission decided to delete those, obviously, we would be in agreement. That would be to our benefit. But the language that Planning Staff came up, we thought was pretty reasonable, because it allowed flexibility.
Okay, thank you. I agree with Commissioner Dixon. There's some ambiguity here that I'm struggling with. So, I guess my question is, and either you or the owners may hopefully can clarify, what is the minimum number of employees at the place at any one time? Sorry, I didn't mean to make you get all the way up here.
They were expecting to answer questions and she's very comfortable answering questions. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Megan.
Hi. Good evening. It depends on the day. So we have a good idea of how the week works and obviously Mondays and Tuesdays are going to be our slowest days. Thursday, Friday might be our busiest days and so we staff accordingly. I would say at any given time, there's more than likely seven to eight people there. And then throughout the day, you're looking at probably closer to, I would say 12 to 15. It just depends, but.
Okay.
Quite a lot of people, yeah.
So if there was a stated minimum in the conditions of approval, would that be something that might be easier to deal with rather than some arbitrary and ambiguous ratio?
A stated minimum on site?
Yeah.
I think so. The ratio is, yeah, it's, it's a little bit difficult, I think. But for the overnight, oh.
You can think about it. It's just a question.
Okay.
I'm not expecting a full answer.
I think that would be better, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything else you want to add while you're up there?
Unless you guys have any other questions.
No? Okay. We'll have a seat and we'll open up for public comment now. Anybody wishing to make any comments in the chambers, please come to the podium.
I'm sorry, can I add one comment? That was Megan Flynn, for the record. I don't think she stated her name. Megan Flynn, the co-owner.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Just wanted to let you know that just tonight, we've added five participants to the process improvement alone. As you know me, I've been Doge before. Doge was a cool thing. As far as getting the notices, I think it's fantastic that staff, you know, is one day ahead now. But I think as a policy recommendation for the Commission, we should look to Huntington Beach that gets their staff reports out one week in advance. We should raise the bar and that should be our standard. As far as ex parte communication goes, when I was chair, the city attorney advised me that.
Sorry, Mr. Pet. Do you have a comment on this particular item?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
From a process perspective, 100%. So as far as ex parte communications goes, when I was Chairman of the Planning Commission, I asked it in reverse. Was anyone too busy not to visit the site, not to talk to the applicant, not to talk to adjacent properties? When you look at the items of public hearings that we've historically had over the last couple of years, it's really been one or two. Congratulations for staff for getting this to three. So as a policy recommendation, that's what I'd recommend. It's going to be really revealing to this process and change the behaviors. I think as a policy recommendation, Commission should make every staff report state, when did this applicant apply? I think it's going to be really revealing, okay? Because when I look at this use that's been in operation since 2018, it should be a very simple staff report because history predicts the future, right? But we had a valet CUP that had been in operations for four and a half years. It took 14 months to get the Planning Commission. So Commissioner Martinez, I saw you ask questions. To me, it looked like that's the first time staff heard your questions and I'd like to change that policy. As a policy recommendation, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair, I think you need to bring back the pre-meetings so that the Planning Commission at least has that moment to alert staff to say, hey, heads up, I'm going to ask these three questions. That's a great policy recommendation. And the same thing on this for the conditions of approval. Am I done?
No, go ahead.
In the conditions, I think you should start to set a policy with staff that says, hey, if your conditions aren't here, you can't have another bite at the apple later on. I'll give you an example. I gave you one about the encroachment permits. Those are really meaningful and timely things, right? When I had to do that, all of a sudden I had to get a Caltrans encroachment permit. We had no idea when we went through this lengthy process that took us two years to get here. There's a moratorium over on Harbor during the fair that we couldn't do. Those things need to be there. Let me make fun of another staff, right? You look over there at Mesa Water, do you know if you have more than 1,000 square foot of landscaping? They make you split domestic and irrigation. You have to put in a whole new meter. You have to go out and spend $30,000 to $100,000 going into the street. Applicants should know that at this time. So I just wanted to share that from a process perspective. I'm in support of this. I saw no issues. Wish them luck. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else in chambers wish to speak? Okay. Anna, anybody on Zoom or on phone?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Applicant, do you have any closing comments you want to make? Okay. Commissioners, any further questions for staff? Commissioner Dixon.
Just one quick thing about the conditions of approval. There are three different conditions of approval dealing with a pick off and drop, pick up and drop off. And I was just, it doesn't need to be on this particular one, but eight, 17, and 20. It just may be for efficiency sake and for ease of reference when people are referring back to the conditions of approval, maybe combine those into one, maybe with a perhaps bullet points regarding, just something to think about. Instead of having three separate conditions of approval, have them all in one. Just a process thing. I don't think we need to do that now because we'd have to have the applicant come up and agree with it. So just on that, but that was my only comment to staff on this particular one.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I will close the public hearing now. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Motion by Vice Chair Zick.
A move that we find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA per SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approve the conditional use permit PCUP-24-009 based on findings of fact and subject to conditions of approval as updated by staff. And that is condition of approval number one, changing the hours of operation, the number of animals, and adding the pickup and drop off service. Condition of approval number nine, the changes that staff recommended there, I think are sufficient as is. And then on condition approval number 12, although the wording is improved, I would make one more suggestion on that as part of my motion and that it say, I want to add one additional word. It would say an appropriate employee ratio to animals shall be provided at all times. An appropriate ratio. And if I get a second, I will elaborate on my rationale.
Okay. Do we have a second? Commissioner Dixon? Okay.
So I thought that with regard to condition approval number nine, I thought that Assistant Director Drapkin adequately and convincingly explained why examples of mitigating actions are included in the condition. I think it's useful to suggest, not only for public awareness, but for applicant awareness, the extent to which they may need to go to comply. If you left it off, does it hurt you legally? No, but it, I think, really helps an applicant and the public understand just how far they may need to go to mitigate an issue if it were to come up. So I think it's useful to have those examples. Condition of approval number 12, I think it's a little awkward to, with the wording as it is now, to say an employee ratio to animals shall be provided. I think it would be a little more comprehensible to say an appropriate employee to animal ratio shall be provided. And I understood the Chair's comment about this and he may elaborate, but my thinking is there's, there's something that we're interested in achieving and we could either put that in a condition of approval and describe the outcome that we want, or we could try to micromanage how we expect you to get there. And I think if we told you have three people there, have six people there, have 15 to one there, that micromanages how you go about getting what we want. And what we want is if it takes 20 to one, then have 20 to one. 15 to one, 15 to one. Four to one, four to, but it's the outcome that we're interested in, not how many people it takes you. That's why I make my motion the way, the way I do. And I think that, again, Assistant Director Drapkin addressed this point well, and that is if we say an appropriate ratio and the outcome isn't achieved, then it's very easy for the city to come back and say, well, you just don't have enough people. You're going to have to change your approach. So that's the basis of my motion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Dixon, you want to speak to your second?
Yeah, I think that, I think that appropriate works. I'd like, whether or not we leave it to the discretion of the applicant or the staff, I think the rest of the condition, as you pointed out, does give us that, that hook. It's an appropriate ratio, whether it's working under the conditions of approval or if it's working for the applicant. You know, some days there may be 30 huskies, some day there may be, you know, three cats. And that shouldn't be something we're, we're micromanaging as far as what the best way to do that. Because we do have the operates without neighborhood impacts and safely with both animal employees' property protected. I will note regarding the other issues that were raised by the commenters, with the odor and the noise, that two existing conditions of approval do address those. So I'd encourage that, and we haven't had any complaints, any formal complaints in the operation of the business. So I think that it's appropriately conditioned and I think an appropriate employee ratio works. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments?
So just to clarify, we're leaving it open-ended for the, for the business to determine what that ratio is, right? Not setting that ratio. Because I could see, you know, the owners coming up and sharing, right? It all depends on the schedule. Maybe you have a high volume day, maybe you have a low volume day and it's all about the freedom of doing business that makes sense for the business to continue to be successful. So, okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
And to your point on that, I just, we've taken our dogs to similar places and we don't take them there if it looks like it's not appropriately run or if it's dirty or if it's noisy or if there's not enough staff. So there's that, there's that element just from the running the business part. And then if it's not appropriate from the city's perspective because of complaints or other issues, then we have those two avenues. So thank you.
All right. Any final questions? Commissioner Martinez.
Final comment. I will support this motion. When I read condition of approval number 12, I underlined an employee ratio, put a big question mark next to it. I didn't know how to handle that. I think Vice Chair Zick's word, appropriate, that works for me. That's great. Number nine, the examples, I could be with them. It could work without them. I think that would be fine. A lot of the things that we're doing tonight, it's just, I don't know, you could have them, you could not have them. I think it'd be fine either way. I think the biggest thing that we're doing today is changing the hours of operation, which I support, and adding accessory retail sales, which I would also support. So good, good project, good motion.
Okay. Thank you. Likewise, I'll be supporting this motion and I appreciate the rationale that Vice Chair Zick offered for what seemed like a kind of pesky condition. I think more broadly, though, I just appreciate having an applicant before us that has had a successful business here that is growing. This is exactly what we want to see in Costa Mesa. So thank you for that. All right. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries 7-0.
All right. That decision is final and let's appeal to the City Council within seven days. Congratulations. All right. Anna, would you please read the title for public hearing item number two?
Public hearing item number two, master plan PMAP-24-0004 and tentative track map 19345 for the development of 38 live-work residential units at 960 West 16th Street. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the Commission and made a part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Okay. Ex parte. Commissioner Dixon.
I spoke with the applicant team last week for about half an hour or so.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez?
Yes. On May, when was this, May 15th, 2024, I met with the applicant and with former Vice Chair Toler. I attended the City Council screening on whatever day that was. On December 11th, I attended the Mesa Water Board meeting when this property was discussed and I visited the site on February 2nd.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Rojas.
I also had a call with the applicant team last week. Spent about half an hour, 45 minutes talking with them and that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kleepack?
I met with the applicant's representative on November 10th, 2024.
Okay. And I met with the applicant team about a week and a half ago. And Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick?
I visited the site and unfortunately, I did not reach out to the applicant nor did they, do I recall them reaching out to me. So I look forward to the presentation.
Okay. Great. Let's turn it over to Mr. Yeager. Do you have the floor?
All right. Good evening, Chair Harland and the rest of the Commissioners. My name's Chris Yeager. I'm senior of this urban plan. It is an overlay plan which goes on top of the existing zoning, primarily industrial and commercial in West Side Costa Mesa. And it allows for live-work and residential development, gives more options to the property owners. A live-work unit, it's, it's a mixed-use development and it consists of a joint workspace and a living quarters in the same building. The urban plan, it allows for flexible development standards and also allows for deviations to those standards. Tonight, the required findings needed to approve the project are master plan findings, urban plan deviation findings, and tentative track map findings. So back in June, the project did go to City Council for a screening. The first step in an urban master plan, it is to go to City Council for a screening. At that point, the council was generally supportive of the project and feedback was provided to the applicants to increase the size of the workspace. They had proposed a deviation for that at that point, but that has not been requested for the entitlement. There were also various comments to prioritize pedestrian and active transportation. And there were also comments that the deviation for the parking, it could be supported if the data supports it. The applicants submitted their application exactly five months ago and in that, they responded with increasing the size of those workspace to 250 square feet. They prioritized the pedestrian realm by orienting more of the storefronts towards the private street to give it a more urban feel. They added bike racks throughout the project and also added a couple pedestrian amenities, including two parklets on the private street and two additional pedestrian gathering spaces. And finally, the applicants did provide a parking study, which we will discuss shortly. The project site, it's approximately 2.3 acres in West Side Costa Mesa, formerly occupied by the Ruka headquarters. It's on the north side of West 16th Street, approximately 500 feet west of Monrovia Avenue. The site is bounded by 16th Street to the south with the City of Newport Beach's utility yard across the street. There's a multi-tenant industrial property to the east and then to the north and west is a similar live-work development, the Lighthouse Community. Should be noted that the city boundary with Newport Beach, it is on the southern property line of this project. So everything in the public right-of-way, curb, gutter, sidewalk, street, that is all in the City of Newport Beach. And as a result, off-site improvements in the public realm will be permitted and reviewed by the City of Newport Beach. The site does have a general plan, land use designation of light industrial and a zoning designation of general industrial. The light industrial designation, it's intended for a variety of light and industrial uses. In the MG zone, it is intended for a variety of industrial areas which contain wide range of uses. As noted, the urban plan overlays on top of these zones and when the urban plan is activated with a master plan, those standards do preempt the underlying zone. The slide in front of you does show some of the existing conditions of the site. On the top left, you can see the building from the parking lot. On the right is the public right-of-way and the building. And the majority of the site, it is the building, parking lot, and just that small strip of landscaping in the front. The surrounding area, in the top left, you see the multi-tenant industrial building directly to the east and then on the top right. directly to the east, and then on the top right is the Lighthouse Community as well as the bottom right, and the Newport utility yard is on the bottom left. So, the project today, it is a thirty-eight unit live-work development which would be facilitated by the master plan. And the project, it proposes a density of sixteen point five dwelling units per acre, which the urban plan allows up to twenty to use per acre. The maximum height proposed is forty-four feet, three inches, and it consists of four floors, including a partially covered roof deck. The proposed floor area ratio for the project, it's oh point eight, oh point eight-two, or I'm sorry, oh point eight-five, which is less than the urban plan max, which is one point oh. In order to facilitate the project, so the first deviation requested by the project, it is to request a reduction in the required building separation. The urban plan does call out a ten-foot minimum separation between all buildings, and the applicant is proposing a six-foot separation. This is similar separation which was approved by the neighboring Lighthouse Community, and it's also similar to other standards that the city has, including small lot ordinance and ADU separations. Since the reduced separation, it allows for the development to better achieve the purposes of the general plan, which encourages ownership residential. The city is supportive of the deviation. The second deviation is a request to reduce the number of guest parking spaces. The urban plan, it does require one hundred and thirty-three total parking spaces, including seventy-six tenant spaces and fifty-seven guest spaces. The project is proposing seventy-six tenant spaces and then eight driveway parking spaces and twenty guest parking spaces. Each unit, it does include a two-car garage, and four of the units do have a, two additional parking spaces in the driveway in front of those garages. Surface parking spaces are also located throughout the project, including eleven parallel spaces on the new private street and nine-car surface parking lot towards the interior of the project. Overall, the project is proposing a parking ratio of two point seven parking spaces per unit. Staff is supporting the request because the applicants have supplied a parking study prepared by a professional group, LLG, and the study obtained empirical data through two other similar live-work developments in the city. One is the neighboring Lighthouse and the other over on Industrial Way. And they identified that the peak midday demand would be two point six six spaces per unit, as shown, two point seven. So since the numbers line up, staff is supporting the project. In addition to the parking, as noted, active transportation's been considered. They're including multiple bike rack areas in the project, and the prioritization of the pedestrian realm does play a part. So, the proposed site plan includes the private street going down the center of the property with branching alleyways. There's the common parking space towards the middle top of the, or the common parking lot in the middle top of the image. The private street, it does end in a cul-de-sac, which does include some enhanced landscaping in the center island. And the parklets mentioned earlier are marked with a four. You can see them on the top of the screen, under that pink tree, and then on the bottom as well, under that pink tree, and then directly in from those paseos are the parklets and the private street. All of the units facing West Sixteenth Street would have their storefronts oriented towards the street. All of the other units which are along the private street would have their entrances oriented towards the private street. The project includes two unit models, and then the end units have slight variations. Each unit, it is proposed with a ground-floor workspace, an accessible restroom, and a two-car garage. The residential space is located above the proposed work areas, and it includes second-floor living area and covered deck. Third floor is proposed to be the sleeping area with three bedrooms, two full bathrooms. And each unit, it is propose a covered roof deck, approximately seven hundred square feet, and it is partially covered. The fourth-floor roof deck area also includes nooks for mechanical equipment to be located on the roof and screened from other units in the public right-of-way. The project includes contemporary design features, including modern elements such as large storefront windows, mixture of exterior cladding materials, and various articulations. The project, it includes four elevation types that you can see on your screen. They do have varying cladding materials. However, all of them are proposed to be natural-toned. The materials are all designed to resist wear and tear over the lifetime and are intended to be low maintenance. The immediately surrounding neighborhood, specifically the Lighthouse Community, features very comparable architecture to the proposed development. The interior side elevations, as you see in the top row, include less detail than the front elevations. However, these units, they, or these side elevations, they would not be too visible to the public right-of-way as they would be between the buildings. The middle row here, you can see the variations proposed for the end units, which are adjacent to the private street. There's additional articulation and design features on those facades to give more entrance and call out the, or to give more interest and to call out the entrances of those storefronts. And then finally, the rear elevations also incorporate the same materials as the other elevations, but they also have that nice garage door adjacent to the alleys. The project proposes over seventeen thousand square feet of landscaping, and it includes a variety of drought-tolerant and California native plant species. The total number of trees and other landscaping materials is exceeding the code minimums, and some of the proposed landscaping materials include California sycamores, crepe bay, or sweet bays, crepe myrtles, magnolia, potocarpus, and other flowering trees. There's a variety of other shrubs, California lilac, berkeley sedge, coffee bush, which are all noted as natives. The final landscape plan, it would be reviewed in depth prior to the issuance of building permits, and the landscaping, it will be required to comply with the water-efficient landscape ordinance. Integral part of all live-work units is the work component. The urban plan includes the land use matrix that you see on the screen, and it includes a variety of small-scale services which are encouraged by the urban plan. And there's limited larger commercial uses which are permitted through discretionary reviews. Only the conditionally-approved land uses would require any subsequent review to the planning commission. If they're doing any other uses on site, that's marked with a P, it would be permitted. If there's an MC, that's a minor conditional use permit, and that would go to the zoning administrator for review. And during those discretionary reviews, items like parking, lease space restrictions, hours of operations, and other related conditions could be applied in those uses. All live-work projects are required to submit various studies. The noise study, phase-one environmental health risk assessment were submitted as a part of this review, and they did not reveal any environmental concerns for the project. The studies and environmental analysis, they did assist in identifying that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to the infill exemption. And then, in addition to the standard conditions, there's a lot of project-specific conditions on the draft resolution, including that the units be marked, marketed as live-work units and that the workspaces be maintained. Notice to buyers be provided, to all new buyers, identifying the location in industrial zone and any, any things that that may bring with that. If any signage is proposed, that comprehensive sign program be required for onsite signage. Any utilities in the front setback would need to be either screened or located outside of the setback. The private street and alley are required to be decorative stamped concrete or pervious pavers with no center concrete swales. CCNRs will be required to be established for the project, and they will have various requirements, including requiring vehicle parking in garages, prohibiting outside storage of boats, trailers, and RVs, and to plan for maintenance of open spaces in common areas. And a utility plan will be submitted as well. So in order to approve the project, planning commission needs to make the required findings mentioned earlier. Staff's included the findings in the staff report, but in short, the tentative track map can be approved because it's consistent with the general plan and zoning code. The site is physically suitable for the subdivision. The design provides for natural heating and cooling, does not interfere with utilities or public access, and it's already serviced by all utilities. The master plan findings are that the project complies with the urban plan, municipal code, and the general plan. Adequate resident-serving amenities are provided. The various studies demonstrate that the residential use is safe and that screening and separation has been provided from industrial and, or adjacent industrial uses. And finally, the deviation findings are provided, proposing that the, or including that the project includes excellence in design and planning, and that the deviations for separation, it won't be detrimental to public health, and that the deviation for parking can be supported because data has been provided. With that, staff recommends the planning commission adopt a resolution to find the project categorically exempt through the infill development provision of CEQA and to approve the master plan and deviations and track map subject to the conditions of approval. So I can make myself available to questions. The applicant team has also prepared a brief presentation as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Yeager. As always, I appreciate the comprehensive report. Commissioners, questions of staff? I see nodding heads, but go ahead. Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. All right. I'll get us started. First, for context for the site, for open space, what's the closest park to the site, and how far away is it?
The closest park to the site is Schiffer Park. It is approximately zero point nine miles from the project site, and then obviously the Joan Randall Preserve is just a couple hundred feet down the street. We'll see what comes from that.
Yeah. The land at the end of Sixteenth Street, I believe, is actually owned by the school district and not by the Mountains and Recreation Conservation Authority. So, we'll see what happens with that land, really. Okay, so, point nine miles, that's pretty far away. I'll keep that in mind for later. Next, about parking. Is staff okay with the assumption in the parking study that all garage spaces are filled at all times?
So, the conditions and requirements for the CCNRs require that the parking spaces be made available for parking at all times. So the assumption that they are filled at all times was acceptable by staff.
Okay. So, even though it's possible that there weren't cars in those spaces, we're fine, we're okay setting a higher rate from that study, even though there might not have been that much demand?
I think what you're asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, is if, for instance, the actual parking demand was less.
Yeah.
Because people, folks weren't using their garages, so we accounted for if the reality of the garage being filled, if the engineering report mentioned that, and they did an actual review, which would have been difficult.
Yeah.
We would have accepted something like that, too. We're very accommodating when it comes to actual parking demand. The code is very good when it comes to that with regards to considering real-life parking considerations versus set ratios.
Yeah. Do we know what their methodology was to do this?
I'm not comfortable diving into the details. The applicant team may be able to answer that for you.
Be ready for that one. Let's see. The, for public works. The project has to comply with Newport Beach's driveway approach standards. Does it also comply with ours?
Yes, Commissioner Martinez, good evening. So, in terms of one point of correction, the Newport Beach standard, which is enumerated, is actually one sixty-one, not one sixty. Staff has reviewed that, and it does comport with our standard, which is analogous to an alley driveway.
Do we have to correct that in our? How is storm runoff directed off of the site? And really what I'm getting at is, will it go across or over a sidewalk?
So, the City of Newport Beach did include a condition that a trench drain be installed at the end of the driveway. Essentially, that trench drain will collect any additional drainage that's leaving the driveway towards the sidewalk.
Okay. So it won't go over the sidewalk, sidewalk won't be, well, it'll be wet because it's raining, but not because stormwater runoff is going over it, and that's good. And about ADUs. So, does, first of all, can the work area in a live-work, I guess in any live-work, be converted into an ADU?
So, the state law provides that any single-family dwelling can convert a space within that dwelling into an ADU.
Okay. But then we get into condition of approval twenty-five F, which prevents conversion of the workspace into living area. So, would our condition prevent an ADU conversion?
We would have to take that up with the city attorney's office, but essentially, the state code, it also preempts CCNRs from prohibiting ADUs. So the state code is very relaxed in allowing ADUs. But for direct answer, I would defer to Mr. Prezi of C.
Yeah, and I think also, what, when you asked that question, it kind of generated the question, and certainly staff wouldn't be supportive of turning a live-work portion to an ADU. The whole purpose of this development and to meet the master plan requirements and the requirements of the urban plan is to be live-work component. One option that the applicant would have, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris Cricks is actually our ADU specialist as well. So he's a good question, questioning board for that. But in this situation, because they're detached, single-family residential units, the garage could be converted if somebody was willing to apply for that, if I'm not mistaken. So there would be an opportunity for the applicant to put a ground-floor ADU on there, like with any ADUs, or it's because they're new, are they, they're not prevented by that if they're, because they're new, is it?
No. So the units would have to be constructed in existence before they were converted. But the short answer is yes, the garages could be converted.
Thanks.
Yeah, I had, I guess I had a different understanding of state law. I thought that HOAs could prevent ADUs through their CCNRs. I did think that that was, state law was more, I don't know if it's more relaxed, but more relaxed in specifically HOAs. But I'll take your answer. Thank you. And that's it for me.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you. Couple of questions. Mr. Yeager, could you turn to page eleven of your presentation? In a moment, I'll ask you to turn to page eight, but I'll tell you what I'm looking at in this picture before we go to page eight. I'm seeing a parkway with landscaping. I'm seeing a sidewalk, and then I'm seeing a landscaped setback, and then I'm seeing some walls. Now, could we go to page eight? Of your presentation? In this picture, what I'm seeing is a landscaped parkway, a sidewalk, and then a wall right alongside the edge of that sidewalk, and potentially, from this perspective, it's hard to tell. Maybe there's a foot of the distance between the sidewalk and the wall. I do see some greenery in that space. So my question, first question is, which of these two is a better representation of what is actually going to be constructed? And I'm asking the question because it wasn't clear to me when I looked at the eleven-by-seventeen diagram, page two. So it wasn't really clear to me from that.
Sure. So it's a great question. As always with renderings, there's going to be some differences in the angle it's taken from, and oftentimes landscaping isn't necessarily accurately portrayed. And oftentimes landscaping isn't necessarily accurately portrayed. In this case, they did include the new street trees, which will be required by Newport Beach. There is a landscaped setback in front of all of those walls. I believe it's approximately five feet, but my eyes are failing me on these 11 by 17s as well.
Between the sidewalk and the wall?
Correct.
Of five feet?
Approximately five feet. I'll let the applicant team verify that. But yeah, there is landscaping proposed in that setback, and then staff will be reviewing the landscape plan to ensure that the landscaping in that area does soften that wall.
So not to get bogged down into the arithmetic, but on the staff report, page two, you indicate that there is a front setback of 15 feet. And would that 15 feet be counted as parkway plus sidewalk?
So.
Plus landscaping or all the way to the face of the structure?
Great question. So the setback in urban plans, it's a build-to line. So from the property line to the front of the building is 15 feet. The landscaping, the sidewalk itself is where the setback is. So within the public right-of-way, it goes curb, landscaping, sidewalk, property line. So the building itself is 15 feet away from the property line.
From the property line, okay. And on the city of Newport Beach's conditions of approval, the first question I have about that is, they indicate there that what they're looking for is a three-foot, four-inch parkway and a six-foot wide sidewalk. Are those dimensions what we are requiring as part of our approval?
Yes, so those dimensions are entirely within the public right-of-way. So the, they would be subject to Newport Beach's requirements for that.
Okay. And then they refer also then to the plantings within the parkway as well as the private landscaping setback. And again, could the private landscaping setback, is that the five feet between the sidewalk and the wall? Or is that on the other side of the wall?
Sorry, I'm just identifying that condition on their sheet.
I'm reading that off of the attachment three, which is the Newport Beach letter.
What page are you looking at on the attachment?
Attachment three. Sorry, it doesn't have page numbers. Which while you're looking for that, just a quick side note maybe for the director, we used to have handwritten page numbers written from the start to finish of a package so it would be easy to reference them regardless of what attachment. So I just make that as a general suggestion.
Noted.
Okay.
Perhaps I'm missing it. I just don't see anything about private landscape. The city of Newport Beach, their jurisdiction is within the public right-of-way. Anything on the property itself is city of Costa Mesa jurisdiction.
Okay. All right. I'll move on then. So on this separation, six foot versus 10 foot, you mentioned that the requirement for 10 feet is in the Mesa Bluffs urban plan. Do you know the basis for that?
I do not know the intent of where that came from. I know the six where that is proposed is because that is the building code minimum. It would be a three-foot space from each building. So it'd be a six-foot total separation.
So would it be fair to say that staff's support of the six-foot separation is based on the fact that that's in our code and not because it was a precedent set in an approval for another project? Because that wouldn't be a precedent.
I'll take a crack at that. It would be, when I was reviewing that, I did review it based on some of the findings that we require with regards to not setting precedent. I think that's what you're referring to most likely, Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick, because you've seen that before.
Yes, I have.
And that was my take on that, so to speak, as well, is that because it's written in another provisions and allowed, for instance, the small lot ordinance, we thought that was fine or acceptable, I should say. And then we also had fire look at it from a perspective of safe space. And then we've also seen other projects with similar setbacks that have worked effectively. But however, that's leaning to that precedent, which I'm not so tied to as much as the standards.
Okay. Thank you for that. So in the staff, next question, in the staff report, there's an indication that there is, I forget the exact term used, on page 15 of the staff report, that the phase two, I presume it was the phase two, not the phase one, found soil gas impacts in the property. My question about that is, and I'm relating to condition of approval number six, which refers to a notice to buyers, and it lists a number of disclosures that would be made to buyers. My question is, is there a requirement that there is included in the notice to buyers some disclosure of the soil gas impacts, even if the way the construction is intended to deal with that is simply adding a vapor intrusion layer? Would there still be a disclosure requirement to buyers?
As the condition is currently written, that would not be required. However, if the commission felt that would be needed, it could be added in.
Okay. My next question goes back to this idea of the garages being used for cars. And I'm referring now to, let's see, it's a condition of approval, looks like 25G, where the homeowner association shall submit a signed affidavit annually certifying several things. And I misspoke. My question is not about the garages. That affidavit refers to the garages. My question about that provision is whether or not we require a certification that the workspace is used as a workspace.
Excellent question. I'm just scanning the condition. If you want to come back to that one, I'll.
Okay, I'd be happy to. So since these are intended to be live-work, do we allow for business signage to be installed on the individual units?
It would be allowed. However, they would need a comprehensive sign program before any signage was permitted.
Would it also be allowed to have signage on some sort of a monument at the street?
Correct. Again, it would have to go through the comprehensive sign program.
Okay. And then if you could speak just briefly about this live-work. Now, you mentioned the Mesa West Bluffs urban plan when you started your presentation, and you indicated that it is, that it covers both live-work units and residential development. So not everything in the Mesa West Bluffs plan has to be live-work if it's a residential development, correct?
Correct. The urban plan allows for residential lofts as well, which comes with different standards.
Correct. And the live-work has a higher density?
Correct, yes.
Correct, okay.
In response to your previous question.
Yes, sir.
On the condition number three, it speaks to the requirements of the live-work units and marketing and such and such. And buried into the bottom of that condition, it says, "Buyers shall be informed in writing that the workspaces shall be maintained as a workspace and not converted to a living bedroom or recreational space." Does that get you your concern for that? We could.
No, I've got that circled as well. But what that doesn't do is have any belt and suspenders around it. I think that's all I have for now.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Zick. Any other questions of staff by commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Andrade.
Along the lines of the inquiry on, and also the models of the, the street facing on 16th Street, the homes or properties that would be facing the street so that it is accessible? Yes, thank you. Right, because they're live-work, so on the first floor is the business. And so with this high fence, and also in the designs, I thought I saw in the samples that we, in the landscape samples that we received, that there's like stairs going into it. So like, how would a, you know, someone, a pedestrian or someone that is interested in purchasing or whatever, engaging with the business, know that there's a business there if there's, you know what I mean? Like, there's no, I don't see an entry point. I thought that was the whole idea of city council asking them to be street-facing.
So the way the topography works out on the site, it is, it requires substantial grading. You see that at the neighboring property as well, where it has similar walls. The units, the storefronts themselves are facing the street. So theoretically, there should be some visibility into the windows. I mean, maybe you have to be on the other side of the street to see it through the landscaping. However, all of the workspaces, they are accessible. So there is a pathway leading to those three behind the wall, an accessible pathway.
So a person, because I've also driven by these live-work spaces, and first thing you see in that private street, it says, "Private," no trespassing. So I'm supposed to trespass and then turn past this wall to engage with any of these businesses?
So the.
Couple of feet of.
Yeah, the, the businesses that are typically in live-work units, they are very small scale. A lot of times, it might not even be a business. It'll be people just using it as a home office. So the staff has done a survey of the live-work units in town. I don't have the exact numbers, but the vast majority of the units that could be seen visibly were set up with desks and chairs. So the signage is important. If they, if they'd like to get the signage going, we would encourage them to get that sign program submitted. Obviously, signage can drive customer traffic. But the goal of these live-work units, it is very small-scale operations. We're not going to have a lot of people coming and going.
Sure. I mean, that some of the examples that we have in the business, it's like music studio, photography, so jewelry-making, I, one of the pages are here. So like, right, it would, it would appear as if we're encouraging those kind of businesses that would require that type of engagement. But, so yeah, so it sounds like maybe signage helps, will also help in addressing that visibility, that access. So will there be, or maybe this is a question for the applicant, will there be steps leading up to it? It looked like, again, in the intra-corp models, it looked like there were going to be steps going up?
So the, there will be steps on the four southern units or the four eastern units, excuse me. The three western units, due to the topography, there will not be stairs directly from the street.
Okay. Okay. So, and so just to understand the kind of, right, because by a developer applying for this live-work opportunity to be able to increase the number of units, so we're allowing them some kind of waivers, right, in order to do so? But, so just to, is there a need or an opportunity to maybe expand on what kind of businesses? Because if we're saying that, well, really, anybody can just buy the property and do your job, you know, now most workplaces are hybrid, and so as long as you can work remotely, you can have one of these, you qualify for one of these opportunities?
Well, any, anyone can purchase it. You don't have to have a business. It's the, I guess I'm not sure. I follow you. Sorry.
So if, right, we're allowing developers to say, "I want this property," and, you know, and ask for all these waivers to build, you know, the reduced setbacks, the increase in density, because they will be live-work units and encourage business to the city, income to the city, but yet we don't have any kind of expectations really of that there will be a business that will bring revenue, visibility, arts, blah, et cetera, et cetera, to the city?
I'll let the applicants dive into that one, just to see what their expectations are. They do have a big portfolio of housing in Southern California, so they're very well aware of the market demands.
Is there anything in our code that requires it?
The code requires that the workspace be used as a workspace and not as a living or bedroom.
Okay. So, and that could be working from home, business, or not?
Correct.
Got it. Um, private street. Okay, and so then I guess, I guess that answer is also along the lines, my other question was like, if this is a private street, I guess it doesn't really matter, really, is what we're saying, for the business, the properties that will have their businesses, their work units facing that private street, right? So I guess it's pretty flexible.
Yeah, the, the units on the ends, they were oriented that way, just to give the more urban feel on the private street, just that you're facing businesses as opposed to a big stucco wall.
Right. Okay. But it is a private street, that again.
It is, it is a private street in that it is owned and maintained by the association.
By the association. Yeah, I think that's, oh, and then one last question about the design, the guidelines on design. I see that it's, we, is there, I mean, the very specific guidelines for design, they all, they all look the same. So is there any flexibility to provide the developers, the architects, to still fall within the requirements that we're having, the size, setbacks, all that, the materials, but maybe adding a little vibrancy, a little, you know, difference, differences? Because a lot of these projects that are all coming up that we see, they all look the same. Right, we're city of the arts, is there a way to kind of maybe allow some flexibility, allow some flexibility to the developers? And I don't know if this would be maybe a code change opportunity or review of those guidelines to maybe just allow a little creativity to be immersed in these developments since we, since we have great opportunities for continue to build housing. So more of a comment, I guess, that last one.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Puffer, are you presenting tonight?
Yes, Chair Harland, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. It's great to be in front of you for this evening. Christopher Yeager has the presentation pulled up, and I would just like to add a few brief notes.
Can I just stop, just state your name for the record? And then I just want to know if you've read the staff report and the conditions of approval and if you agree with them.
Yes, my name is Rick Puffer. I'm vice president of development with Intercorp Homes. We have read the conditions. We agree with them and accept them.
Okay, great. Floor is yours.
So good evening, Mayor, sorry, Commissioner Harland and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rick Puffer, as I've stated. I want to go through the slideshow of the items that we brought up this evening. I know that there are a number of questions. I believe this can be addressed just by the items that you're going to see here tonight. Be happy to answer any questions. Briefly, before we get started, I wanted to mention, was about to mention that we've had this site under control since April of 2024. We've been doing due diligence studies. We submitted an application in May of 2024. In June, on June 18th, we were brought before the city council and had a very positive study session. We have embraced those comments within the site plan you see before you today. I'll repeat that. We have embraced and utilized each of the comments that we received from the city council that was very positive, fruitful. And one of the questions they were asking was how quickly we could move this project forward within the city. In our process, we were trying to get before the Planning Commission, if it were possible, and before the end of 2024. and before the end of 2024. I definitely want to commend planning, staff, and just the, the city in their efforts. This has been very collaborative, and they worked together with us, the applicant, to bring the project forward. You see what you see in front of you tonight. So with that being said, do you mind going to the next slide real quick here, Christopher? Intercorp Homes is a privately owned real estate developer that specializes in the redevelopment of info properties across Southern California. Our offices are located nearby in Newport Beach, California. A few of our recent projects are shown here on the right. Each of them have been successful infill projects built around existing uses. I won't go over each one of them, however, in the lower right-hand corner, in front of you, you'll see the place. The place was built within the 17 West community and showcases 44 single-family detached homes, three-story with rooftop decks. We're asked often from potential buyers, when are you going to replicate this product type? It's been very well received. We have another product type that's not in these pictures, but located in the city of Tustin, we opened last February and had three-story homes of, of similar nature, and we have two left to sell today. And our homebuyers are definitely looking for product types like this, families that want to be in Orange County, and specifically, West Side Costa Mesa. We have selected our design team for the 960 West 16th Street project from the local area, based on each consultant's expertise of the residential market. Our architect is SDK Atelier, our civil engineer is CMV Consulting. CMV Consulting did the civil engineering right next door to this project, Lighthouse, and our landscape architect is Land Concern. Each one of these consultants were present the night of June 18th, before our study session with city council. They're each located, these consultants, within 10 miles of this property. They're very well in tune with the dynamics of the city and the design, and what homeowners in this market are looking for. Next slide, please. To briefly state the site plan, and it was very well presented tonight here by planning staff, this site plan has been designed to promote the pedestrian connection and to create increased live workspace. One of the comments that was very definite at the city council study session was that if we did a parking study, which we've conducted through Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan, is that they wanted to promote the ability to use more live workspace and also create parklets and greenbelt spaces to increase the interaction that homeowners would have and the community would have to this design development. It was mentioned that through the center entry, which is a private street maintained by the HOA, there's pavers that will be laid going all the way back to the cul-de-sac. At the cul-de-sac, there's a statement character tree, which is a sycamore tree, that provides a calming effect as you get back to the center space. Off to the left-hand side, if you will, there's additional surface parking. And the three homes that are located in front of that, that parking, the surface parking, open out with courtyards, embrace the space with that sycamore tree that's located at the terminus of the cul-de-sac. Additionally, you'll see on the site, the homes that face each other, that, which creates central passeos and are passive areas for people to sit, to congregate, to, to be below a shade tree, which is called the pink trumpet tree that sits at the terminus of each one of these parklets. It was mentioned by staff that there are bicycle racks throughout the community, there are four of them. So that also creates the opportunity for people to come by bicycle, to be by foot, to embrace the fabric of this community. I will refer to the parking study briefly, and that, that was a study done by LLG that did study the two communities of Lighthouse and Level One, the recent communities that have live work elements. That study did reflect that there, in those communities, there's a ratio of 2.6 parking stalls per home. Now, Commissioner Martinez had asked the question, and it was very well read, in terms of the study. That study, when looking at other communities, represents that when a garage is shut, it's assumed that there's two cars in it. It's possible, in those studies that we did, that there aren't two cars in that. So in essence, the study that was done by Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan may actually be overstating the amount of cars that exist in these other two communities. But our study here today, and our site, rather, design complies with the study of 2.6, and we have a ratio here of over 2.7, and we're not counting any surface parking on 16th Street. If we had 18-foot length stalls on 16th Street, we would have, we'd be able to count eight more stalls, but we're not counting any of those. So I just wanted to refer to that briefly. Next slide, please. This has been mentioned, you guys have seen this, but I want to illustrate, before we get to the floor plans very briefly, is the formation of these spaces. These homes are in, in high demand, one due to their flexibility and the style of, of living that these homeowners seek. It's easy to notice at the first floor, the amount of glazing, which brings in the community. It creates a pedestrian element that people like to present and, and be social with the community and the fabric that they're in. On the second floor, and when I get to the floor plans, you'll truly see this, there's balconies that bring in natural light and provide spaces by which people can live, have their great room, and it becomes very versatile. It brings the outside into the home, I'll get more into that in a moment. The third floor is a sleeping level, got to have that in every home, and that's a great space. You'll be surprised, you'll be truly surprised by the size of the primary bedrooms and secondary bedrooms for families that are seeking this product. Finally, we have the rooftop, which is partially shaded. It's also great for, for those who want to be in the shade, it's part of the time that they're enjoying that space or be in the sunlight, but it becomes very versatile for them. So if you don't mind going to the next slide, this shows the floor plans, this is the Plan One. Just as I mentioned, that live workspace, look at the number of, of windows that face out on that live workspace at the corner. It does do something very important for this community, to have the elements readout, to embrace the person who's coming to walk through the community, maybe ride their bike to this community and check it out. We, we definitely support that, encourage that here in this development. The second floor, as I mentioned, the great room and kitchen. Rarely have I seen a balcony that is 13 feet by nine in a product of this size. We have a floor plan here that does that. Creates an amazing opportunity for families to, to socialize and to embrace the outdoors within the living experience that they have. The third floor is, as I mentioned, the bedroom floor, and there you see the rooftop deck. So I don't want to belabor that in terms of its stylistic approach, but I, I want to pat SDK Atelier on the back, we hand-selected them for this design. And also, if you notice, the condenser is up on the roof. We want a clean site, and that's what this, this architecture does. Next slide, please. This is the Plan Two, so there's two primary floor plans. You can see here, once again, the amount of windows that readout. This, this plan is typically within a run of homes, so this plan typically is not sitting on the end of a run. The differences here are that you've got the larger great room on the second floor, and then you have a very nice sizable island that complements the kitchen area, and again, a good sizable balcony on this level. The formation of the second and, or sorry, the third and, third floor and rooftop deck is somewhat similar, although I would point out on this floor plan, that the primary bedroom is even larger, and the closet space that complements that area. The secondary bedrooms as well are, are increased in size. The family gets to live on one level in these homes, which is great. Next slide, please. This was emphasized a little bit too, but I think in trying to increase the pedestrian connection, there's been very thoughtful selection to the street trees and the, the trees that line the community once you get within the site. The lighter yellow color that you see there is one of the Newport Beach-approved street tree-themed great myrtles. So it'll have a flowering element on 16th Street from the periphery. And then as you come into the site, on these traffic calming pavers, we have the bay laurel, which is the greenish color there. The bay laurel gives off an aroma, it's, it's a great tree, you can actually cook with it. You guys probably seen the bay leaves, so. The reddish color that you see as you come down each one of the parklets, these are the strawberry trees, also known as the Arbutus Marina, great tree. And then the lighter purple color is the pink trumpet tree, which is a good character stylistic tree that will provide shade and add color to the site. I had mentioned the sycamore tree at the cul-de-sac, which also has pavers around it, also providing another great opportunity of connection for this community. Next slide, please. This slide tells you several reasons why West Side Costa Mesa is turning a corner, and there's so much going on in West Side Costa Mesa, and it's a great place to live. The green shape there illustrates our site. And so within, within this map, what I want to emphasize, if you can see it, is the red dashed line reflects nearby bicycle paths, which lead to several areas and provide access down to the beach in a few short minutes. The orange circles represent public transportation bus stops. The green reflects several public parks that enhance this area. These parks include the Randall Preserve, Channel Park, Sunset View Park, Sunset Ridge Park, Cliff Drive Park, and West Newport Park. The light orange color that you see kind of surrounding the areas, those are existing residential uses. And then the purple, the lighter purple color is the retail and other mixed uses within, within this part of town. Last but not least, you can see the yellow hexagons, which are bike shops within this area, West Costa Mesa. As you can see, there are many amenities close by, and the creation of new housing provides additional support for these great establishments, like Elmer Bakery, Orange Coast Winery, Trenta Pizza, and many more authentically West Costa Mesa hallmarks. The next few slides are renderings, it kind of pulls all this together. And I think if you, if you don't mind going to the next slide here real quick, thank you. The front elevation here, it's been asked about. We, we've created the connection on the east side, where we can have steps leading up to the three residences, I'm sorry, it's four residences on the east side, where the grade allows us to come up to that courtyard, and our spaces here, from the parkway back to the walk to the homes, are compliant with the space arrangement, the setbacks for both Newport and Costa Mesa. They, they create the privacy that a homeowner would be seeking, but also the connection that, that a pedestrian could have if they're supposed to be in that space and walk up to the front, the, the live workspace on the first floor. Next slide, please. This is that same rendering blown up a little bit, so you can see the connection. If you know Lighthouse, which is directly adjacent to us on the west side, it's very similar, however, their grade goes up a little bit higher, so they do not have the connection through, well, walkway through the wall, but that has to do with, with the grades. Here, we created the grade, we're able to work with it enough to get a few steps leading up to the live workspace. I also want to point out on the two sides of the entry, where you can see the pedestrian next to the sign that says seven, or sorry, 960 West, there's an element and portal that's intended to draw on the pedestrians on each side of the entry. Next slide, please. This is the parklet or central courtyard where the homes face each other. On the two sides are the Arbutus Marina strawberry trees, those flower, great tree. And then the focal point towards the end of these passeos is the pink trumpet tree, which has the seating located at each one of the terminuses of these courtyards. Next slide, please. This was also reflecting the cul-de-sac, the sycamore tree you can see, the surface parking off to the right, but the landscaping that also embellishes these areas. You can see how the homes that line the center drive face out to the community and create a connection point for pedestrians and visitors who want to check out the live work uses within the community. Next slide, please. We were asked by a few of the city council members if we could show a few pictures of our projects. This is currently being built in Tustin, this is that second level. So this is the great room connection and dining room to the kitchen you see. And if you could show the next slide, this is one of our models there as well in the Jessup community in Tustin, with the great room, the dining room, and the kitchen. They're great spaces for families, and with that, I have one more slide here, if you don't mind showing. I want to tell staff thank you for this collaborative approach, city council as well. There are two things I want to emphasize, and one is, Intercorp Homes carefully selects the HOA management company that we have for each one of our neighborhoods. We, the Intercorp employees, directly connected with the project, stay on the board for several months, even past the completion of construction. We train the new homeowners how to maintain the community in good condition over perpetuity. And with that, we also show homeowners how they need to comply with the CC&Rs within the community. During the course of construction, Intercorp Homes will also adhere to what's called BMPs, or Best Management Practices, that focus on such things as job site safety, compliance hours for work, dust control, and orderly site construction. This goes from start to finish on our projects. As has been mentioned, this site is currently zone general industrial with a residential overlay on it. Our zoning is, or sorry, our density is consistent with the adjacent zoning and density of the Lighthouse project. We comply with the SEQUA standards through the Class 32 exemption, and Intercorp Homes looks forward to the development of this community as there is a current shortage of housing available for those looking to establish their roots in West Side Costa Mesa. As mentioned, we have reviewed the conditions of approval, and we accept them, and will adhere to them throughout the development of this community. Thank you for your time, this concludes our presentation. Our design staff is here if there's any further questions.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Puffer. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Martinez?
Yeah. So I'll start with parking study methodology again. So would you agree that it's possible, if not probable, that the actual parking ratio was below what the study found because of their methodology?
It's a really good point, and I'm glad you read that. It is possible that the study, which assumed the other two sites that were studied, it assumed that the garage had two cars in it. So it's possible, if not likely, that the parking study, by comparison, is already overstated at 2.6.
Yeah, I, I mentioned Professor Shoup at the beginning, and I, I think he has described parking studies and minimum parking requirements previously as a pseudoscience. He, and he's one of the experts on parking, so I am inclined to agree with him. Given, given that, and given, as staff reported, the, the closest park is about a mile away before, you know, before anything happens over at the Randall Preserve. Closest park is a mi- Closest park is a mile away. Would you, or would the applicant be open to the possibility, what am I trying to say here? Would you be open to having the possibility, without further planning commission review, of reducing the number of parking spaces to provide more open space?
We'd be open to the possibility, however, in this instance that we're talking about in the study, and providing the surface parking that we've done, we meet the requirement. We want to make sure we meet the study and the requirement, so we wouldn't want to do anything to lengthen this process and the financial support for it that's been asking us when we would be here at planning commission.
Yeah.
So I don't want to do anything that would lengthen the process, and we are compliant.
That's why I phrase it that way. I wouldn't want to further, I wouldn't want you to have to come back in order to do any of that.
Yeah.
Okay. But you'd be open to having that possibility if it meant no further timeline extensions?
We'd be open to that if it meant no further extension. And then, one thing I do want to emphasize is that whatever that utilization is of its parking, we need to make sure for the homeowners that it can be maintained over the distance, because sometimes you create a landscaping space, if it's landscape, it's going to be versatile for parking. If it's questionable, and then it adds cost to replacement, it burdens homeowners. We do not want to do that. So that's why I state that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Nope, seeing none? Okay. Oh, Commissioner Andrade?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I appreciate the, how you started off, you know, highlighting the, you know, tapping into the feedback that city council had provided in the size of workspace, the storefronts, increasing tree count. Thank you for that. Keeps us, keeps our city cooler. And so my question was, you mentioned the, you know, encouraging the walkability and access to community. So what are, and you mentioned community engagement quite a bit. So what are some of the ideas, ways that you're thinking of, of having that community engagement?
That's a great question. A case in point I want to share is in the community of Huntington Beach, there is an operation like this, a homeowner, her name is Erin, and you guys should look this up, but it's called Lot of Treats. And she does stylistic, like the kind of cookie you get with the piping at a grand opening. And so it's a scenario by which you can place your order online, you can drive to the location, you can pick up your order, and on weekends, they do cookie decorating. I know because my son at age 12 wanted to do this one weekend, and surrounded in a room with women, I guess he had this figured out. But it was a function that worked and was well-received, and people know of this. And so in these live-work spaces, what we aim to do as a developer is to provide versatility. One of those ways I just mentioned by that example, but I think there's a scenario by which the HOA can be supportive of a night during the week where it's that evening, is to somewhat showcase, right? The uses, maybe there's a curator. Photography, photography is often one of the uses for these spaces. Event planning. A lot of times, estheticians, hairstylists, piano lessons, guitar lessons. It often has to do with supplementing an income where you're trying to raise a family. And I can go into ways, we try and help our homeowners, but it's ways to help them create home. And in Orange County, we have to embrace this style of living to help these households produce, they want to produce. That's why I gave that example of Lot of Treats, which is a perfect example for the site. So those are the things that we would do to create that activity. It may not be that it's always a constant open-for-business scenario, but that's why there's resources online, so people understand how it's utilized, and can take people in and out, and function as a home and live-work space the way it's designed to do.
So, yeah, that's really great, just based on the earlier conversation with staff, giving this very, this very unique opportunity to be able to develop these kind of units, making it accessible and connecting it to the community. So I really appreciate. So is that something, so based on what you're describing, do you commonly pursue buyers that are, that have those kind of forward-facing communities, or property owners?
We do, and this is how we do it. We do it with effective marketing. Previously, we've showcased what I mentioned, event planning, wedding planner use. We would showcase again in our marketing, just as is written in the condition of approval, to, a lot of times for the homeowner, the buyer, we want to show that it's versatile and spark that creative interest. It is there, we're just really trying to unlock that and help them see how they can use the space and use it well.
That's great. I appreciate that effort in marketing, and I'm sure that all of this is detailed in your letter and made available to the public, but just again, highlighting it here in this space is really helpful to know that our city is doing its due diligence in assessing and determining what to do with the limited land that we have in our community and addressing the housing crisis that our city faces. So, thank you.
No, definitely appreciate it. Great question. One thing we do as well, we've had a scenario by which sometimes homeowners work with affording the home and being able to equip the live-work space. What's often right now is an interest rate buydown. That reduces the cost of the home for the first two years by way of mortgage payment. What that allows them to do when they have live-work space is equip it with the things that they would need. So that's also another function that we perform that's unique to the market. So anyhow, just want to mention that as well, how we're helping homeowners find homeownership in spaces that adhere to their style of living.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll leave you some time after public comment if you want to respond or have any concluding remarks. So now I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in chambers wants to come and speak, please come to the podium.
Good evening. I'm a homeowner on Lee Strive, the property that directly backs onto the proposed development on 16th, part of the Lighthouse community. The plans show a height of 44 feet per unit, whereas our property is, I think, around 35 feet. This could impact our natural light plus views, and so my question is, why are they not identical in elevation? And finally, my second question is, will the four mature trees that are on 16th be retained or removed? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening again. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. In general, I'm okay with this project. My God. Here are some guys that believe they're going to make a profit, actually living in a way that they don't have to do anything about measure why, because the staff correctly noted, with no change in entitlement, they didn't have a trigger to make measure why happen. And these guys know that this piece of property, 38 units, is going to make them some pretty decent money. Otherwise, they wouldn't be in the business. So I'm pretty happy with that. And I thank staff for noting that, as well as noting that these were in fact four-story units, not three stories with a roof deck. Because the truth is, it being covered certainly makes it even more livable as a floor to live on. Your point, Mr. Zick, about the six-foot separation, you know, personally, six feet, 10 feet, but if Randall Preserve ever catches on fire, because the prevailing breeze comes from across that, from the south, from the south and the west, you're going to have the same thing that we had up in LA. Those roof decks with the canopy got perfect catches. They don't have any roof edges to get caught, embers getting caught in, but the roof deck will do just as good. So being six foot apart is just a premonition to a problem. If, as long as you take all the proper conditions, I'm okay with it. I want, there are concerns I have with the project, not because I think it should be denied, but because I think you guys need to find solutions to eliminate some of those problems. I'm really happy to see the owner occupied, I mean, the ownership of these. As we know, condos are only bought, but oftentimes they become rentals. And if they become a rental, and people who rent them turn not to be families, but tend to be individuals as groups to afford the rents in Costa Mesa, which, oh, I'm sorry, they're not very high, but the rents in Costa Mesa, they wind up by having four people living there, and that's four cars, because they're all going to go someplace else. Oh, if they rent the workspite out, that's going to be another person commuting in because he comes in to use that work spot as his outside rental, which we had no control over. So it's a very big concern. And remember Villa Martinique? They all said that was going to work real well, and everybody parked their toys, boats and what have you, in their parking spaces, and then parked the cars out in the streets. So everybody got to try and get around that, and it is a nightmare over there now, and has been a nightmare since 40 years ago. Thank you, folks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Chair, sorry, I'm just suffering a little PTSD. When I was up there, I grew in 2,000 solo housing units. Mr. Humphrey just turned the elevator. For projects that-
Had, for projects that had better parking, so interesting what a difference a decade makes. Hey, wonderful ex parte communication, that's awesome. Encourage you to do it a lot. Ask a lot of these questions, you're going to learn a lot, and through pattern recognition, you're going to know what I know, where the bottlenecks are, they're the same ones, we need to improve it. That was a fantastic applicant presentation. I've been on the business end of outreach for one of my clients in another city. Very open kimono discussion, just as it has here, so wonderful application. When I hear talk about affordability, and I see commissioners, will you do this, will you do that, will you add costs, will you add costs? Never once do I see anybody at council or commission say, hey, staff, hey, city, what can we do to drive time and money out of this process and therefore reduce? Everything you're talking about goes into a per-door cost, and everything you say for mandates drives the cost up. You should be talking about incentives. So I think it's awesome. Congratulations for staff getting through the five months. What it says from a policy perspective is the city is now adhering to the permit streamlining process. For the last two years, they haven't been. So my policy question and challenge to you, Mr. Chair and the commission, is will you ask staff if every applicant will benefit from the Permit Streamlining Act and be mandated to respond in a 30-day time period? Because that's how we're going to collapse the cycle. That's how we're going to get all applications into that five-month time period. However, I checked on TESSA, there was no references to the application to city council, there's no reference to the CUP here tonight. I can see all business license, I can see inspections, but I can see nothing about this application. That's a problem that needs to be fixed. You know, this whole parking thing, I'm not going to even argue it, but when I was up there, when LLG came in front of me, I didn't often believe them, but they've done so many quality projects here and been right. I always prove wrong, so I think they do a nice job at that. But when you look at where this is, this, where's the parking impact going to go, right? It's not like it's going to be poached. I really wish that this project had access to Banning Ranch, but that's for another night. Here's one of my concerns. If you look at that last condition, the last sets of conditions for the special districts, it says, hey, give the sanitary district a call, give Mesa District a call. How do you know that the districts are not going to subvert your intention tonight? You don't. You have no idea how the trash is going to be serviced tonight. I can tell you the projects that I approved over on Placentia, all of a sudden I found out, this is going to have 38 water meters. I see on condition number 21 on page 15, it talks about backflow devices, doesn't talk about meters. The sanitary, I mean, the Mesa Waters can try and stick those in the sidewalk, right? So this is what I'm talking about. Also, there should be $400,000 in first-time home buyers because of the cannabis tax. The city council has asked, staff has refused to address this. There should be $400,000 available for first-time home buyers, as there's not, because staff is not responding to your city council. Just say yes, this is a fantastic project.
All right. Thank you. Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or phone?
Caller ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, hi, good evening. So I want to address a question I believe Commissioner Zieg had. The live-work is a loophole, and it's a loophole that allows developers to get higher density. The thing that I've always been curious about in this city, and I haven't really followed up with this, is how many of these live-work residences actually have businesses? And I think, you know, when I go by the, from the projects on Placentia, you don't see very many businesses in those buildings. So it's purely a way for a developer, and it's understandable, they want to make as much money as they can when they build a project, and so they're just going to call it live-work. They don't care if there's businesses in there. And there's no way that you guys as a garment can come check and make sure that there were spaces being used for work. So you're just signing off on higher density. There's no overflow parking on 16th Street. The streets, 16th Street and Manolvia, because of Avante and all those businesses on 16th, on Manolvia, they have cars in front of them all day long, they're packed. The other thing, 38 units in this small parcel is absolutely insane. You have to go to 45 feet to make this work. That's just obnoxious. The rendings that were being shown, there's no way those things are to scale. There's absolutely not. There's going to be parking issues. And they're being sold as pedestrian-friendly, family-friendly, they're not family housing. This is not family housing. If you have a family, you want a yard. Now, there's no yard. Where are your kids going to play? Now, this, I get it, this is business, they want to make as much money as they can, you know, and the presenter's very slick, he does a good job, you know, he knows the buzzwords of pedestrian-friendly, and had all you guys, you know, hooked on it, but it's not a good project. Too dense, you know, it's, we were set for these terrible projects from the Righeim and Menzinger area, and their live-work loophole. These are just, you know, cash cows for the developer. Again, that's good for them, they're going to make their money, but it's a bad project. High density, underparked, it's going to impact the neighbors. Now you have a 10-foot building, a building 10-foot taller than yours next to you, and you now no longer have sunlight coming into your building. So I would hope that they would be good neighbors, or maybe consider lowering the height of the houses.
All right. Thank you. Anna, anybody else on Zoom?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
And nobody on phone either?
No, there's not.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any closing questions for staff? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Sorry. I just wanted to maybe have a comment on some of our community members, a neighbor that asked about the elevation discrepancy with the project right next door. I don't know if you guys-
Do you have a question for the applicant?
Oh, no, sorry, not for the applicant, first half.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think I know what you're asking. So the height for this project, it is measured to the top of the pop-up that you see. It's, I'm, I believe that the neighboring property, it does not have the pop-up. The height is measured to the top of the parapet. So comparably, they should not be that much different.
So it won't have that negative impact that they're foreseeing of, I don't know, removing of sunlight, limitation of sunlight and all of that?
I can't say without knowing more about where the neighboring property is. However, there is nothing in the code which talks about views in Costa Mesa. In regards to sunlight, the building code requires specific ventilation, so we just have to comply with that.
And the, and can you, I don't know if this is for the city or the applicant, the removal of the mature trees? I know that that's a big piece in parks' commission to keeping our mature trees as much as possible.
Yeah.
I know that that's a big piece in parks' commission to keeping our mature trees as much as possible.
So that is how it would be if it was in Costa Mesa. The Parkway is in Newport Beach, and their condition requires the removal of the trees. Those massive ficus trees, the roots get into everything and tear up roads, sidewalks, infrastructure.
Got it, got it. Thank you for addressing that in. And thank you, Vice Chair, that is noted on the Newport Beach letter. So it is unfortunately outside of our purview, pretty much, right? Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Before I close the public hearing, Mr. Puffer, if you want, I'll give you an opportunity for any concluding remarks. Don't feel obligated.
Just one point of clarity on the...
Yep.
Just one point of clarity on the trees, the ficus with the pervasive roots that will be removed. It will be replaced. I believe there's four of those trees. It will be replaced with large-sized crepe myrtles, 11 of them.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, may I have a motion? Motion made by Commissioner Dixon.
I move, first of all, my mic is on, yes it is. So thanks, everyone, for the presentation, the staff, and the applicant, and the questions from the public. I'm going to be very brief and make a motion, then we can all speak to the motion.
Sure.
I move that based on the evidence in the record and the findings contained in Exhibit A, the conditions of approval contained within Exhibit B, I move that the Plan Commission hereby approve planning application PMAP-24-0004 and tentative track map 19345. And do we need to do a SEQA as well?
Yes.
So, and then I find that the project is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per Section 15332 in Phil Development.
Okay. Before you speak, can we get a second? Anybody want? Second by Commissioner Zick? Okay, Commissioner Dixon.
So we met with the applicant when I, when I was firsthand of these project plans by Councilmember Reynolds. I think we all, you know, would wish to see tons more open space and tons more livability components for a project like this. You know, I was on the Plan Commission back when these whole live-work things started, and we caught a tremendous amount of hell. I had a meme, which was pretty great, because I was literally destroying the West Side by permitting these. And so being a West Side resident, I had gone back and watched every study session and every council meeting that was available for when these were adopted back in 2006. What was being planned and constructed was literally exactly what the city council and the community had asked for after a multi-year planning process. Some people don't like them, but some people love them. And this is what the code calls for and all these sort of things. So I did ask the applicant, because I thought, well, maybe we could repurpose the parking area, because they've got a pretty good deal of parking for sort of an open space spot. So a community area where the HOA could decide that, you know, on Tuesday nights, we're going to have movie night, or we're going to have, you know, a festival, we're going to have all the businesses in the community come together and have an open house for people to come in and draw to the area. And as mentioned by the applicant this evening, and I think that this goes to their commitment to their buyers and to the community, they said, well, that's going to create a maintenance issue, and that's going to create an issue that, you know, could be a problem for the owners of the HOA. And also, we want to make sure that we comply with the requirements and we provide adequate parking for the businesses. So they did suggest that the HOA, upon its own initiative, going down the road, could, you know, do things as long as they didn't, you know, take parking out of commission. So I appreciated that perspective. I also appreciated the perspective of the trees. And I think it's important to remember that if you look back at the Mesa West Bluffs Urban Plan, which first came around in 2006 and was updated in 2016, it has language like promotes new type of urban housing that would be targeted marketed to people seeking alternative housing choices in an industrial area. An urban loft would be an alternative to the traditional single-family residence, tract home, or small-lot subdivision. Encourage quality live-work development, which promotes business activity through workspaces and amenity areas, which are distinct from residential lofts and loft styles in design and function. Residential development that is non-traditional in form and design with flexible open floor plans, which complements the surrounding existing development. And also in talking with Councilmember Reynolds, it's important to bring life and vitality into these areas. And I think that in 2006 and 2016, we didn't know the pandemic was coming, and we didn't know that work was in a completely change. We were trying to incentivize people to do what they're doing right now. And the city went out and did a survey and said that approximately 75% of these, because that was my question, should we ask for business licenses? How do we know how these are living? Do we need to update the standards? Do we need to decrease parking, increase open space? Whatever we need to do to make these more attractive. And the reality is that 75%, according to the city staff, are being used as workspaces. So I think they're working as designed, especially with a little help from, unfortunately, the pandemic, where instead of people commuting to work, they're staying home and working, which means they go to lunch in the area, or they get their dry cleaning in the area, or they start connecting with people in the area, and they have, well, you know, my kid's going to take a piano lesson at your house, or a cookie decorating class, or something like that. I just think that this is the mechanism for both creating housing opportunities and creating increased residential vitality in an industrial area, which was the purpose of these overlay plans in the first place. With all the buyer's notice and the location, it's across from the city yard. It's not a single-family residential neighborhood. It's an industrial area that people are choosing to live in because of the housing type. I've spoken to realtors about these, because I was perplexed. I don't like them, I want a yard. But people are enthusiastic about them. And the one thing about this particular project, which I like, as opposed to some of the ones that we've done in the past, those balconies are massive. I have friends who live in Promontory Point. They never go anywhere but their balcony. They have this whole thing set up, and it's smaller than this balcony. You know, I have family members who live in Los Angeles who have the means to buy a house in the Palisades or Hollywood Hills or whatever. They live in a high-rise building because of all the amenities and the services, and they live on their balcony. So I think it's a good project. I think the applicant has gone out of its way to address the concerns of the council. I watched the study session as well, the screening. And I think that they've done everything they can to make this as livable as possible and ensure that it's going to be successful. And I think that, according to our plans and our standards, this project is a win. So that's why I make my motion, and I hope that it succeeds.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think part of the reason I seconded the motion is I was very interested to hear what Commissioner Dixon's comments would be about the project. I'm inclined to support the project, so it wasn't an arm twist to second it. I'll start by saying that, Mr. Puffer, I'm extremely impressed with your presentation. You're clearly excellent at marketing. I was going to ask you, when you were up there, what pedestrian connection meant, but I didn't decide to do that. I thought that might just be another name for a sidewalk that, you know, marketer uses, you know? I was smelling trees, and I was hearing angels singing. I was ready to buy one of these, and I don't need one. You know? You're a good salesman. Your artist renderings are unbelievable. You know, I think just sending these pictures around will attract a lot of buyers. So I wanted to pass that compliment along to you. I'm also very happy it's an ownership project. Our city, Costa Mesa, is so out of whack with renter versus ownership compared to the rest of the county. It's a major grievance I have, and so I'm thrilled when there's an ownership project that comes along and not another high-density apartment complex. So you have that going for you. I'm convinced there's a market for this. I believe there's a strong market for this. Obviously, you wouldn't build them if you didn't think people would buy them. Having said that, I think if you got rid of half of the parking, you'd find out there's not such a strong market for that product. Because you're in business to make a profit, you're not some philosopher who wants to build for an anti-car environment, okay? And so I appreciate that you're providing parking. I do have an issue about that, and I'll get to it in a minute. This urban plan was developed many years ago, and the philosophies and ideas behind it were articulated at that time. They may or may not be as relevant today or interpreted differently today, but there clearly was a density incentive if you built live work. What I would be inclined to say is this is not so much a product designed for families. Families are going to buy it. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind about that because of the limited availability of ownership property. They'll buy it. They might even start a family there. And then when their kids want to go outside and play and throw a frisbee, and they realize they really can't do that here, and they realize that a park is a mile away, and, oh, by the way, they're not all going to hop on a bike and ride a mile to get to the park so they can play ball, they're going to get in a car? I think that's when people sell these things and buy homes that have yards, if they're so inclined to do that. But there's a strong market for this, I'm convinced. This is not family housing. And hopefully, you or developers like you will see an opportunity to build family housing in Costa Mesa, because we need, we need that too. I wanted to echo a comment that was made by one of the members of the public, because I too took note of the fact that this was a project that did not have Measure Y as a barrier. We have a whole community within the city that hates Measure Y and blames Measure Y for everything, even the price of eggs. You know, they'll, whatever it is, it's Measure Y caused it. Measure Y is not a barrier to development. Here, you've proved it. I appreciated that. There was a letter that came in from a member of the public, and I hope you had the chance to see it, because I am kind of hoping that your work in Costa Mesa is not going to conclude with only this project. And it was a letter that came in from Russell Toller. Did you see that letter? Okay. You should try to seek it out. He's an excellent planner and visionary in the urban space, and he has an observation that I too have shared with him. And I won't try to use his words as my words, but we're seeing a lot of this product type in the city. Every new development we're seeing is live work, is live work, is live work. And I would really hate to think that every time we had a development in this city, it was live work. And if that's the case, then we're doing something, you're not doing something wrong. We're doing something wrong in the city that allows it, that incentivizes, and doesn't find ways to incentivize other kinds of for-ownership family housing. Does this look like the development just down the street? It would be an insult to your designers to say yes, because I'm sure they think, wait a minute, didn't they notice the way we've done the articulation and the colors and the? Well, no, maybe we, maybe we didn't. It generally looks like what many have derogatorily termed stack of shacks. I think it's a pleasing-looking project. Your renderings make it look absolutely gorgeous, but it's a product we're seeing an awful lot of. There's not a lot of diversity. Parking I'm concerned about. I've always been concerned about parking. My view of parking is this. If I go somewhere and I can't find parking, the project is underparked. I don't care what LLG said, I don't care what you say, I don't care what any of the anti-car cabals say. If I can't find a parking spot, the project is underparked. If I have to park out on 16th, the project is underparked. If I have to park two blocks away on 16th, the project is underparked. You couldn't sell your project if people that bought it didn't have a place to park their car or put their toys in the garage, or whatever they might do. Our standards say you should have 133 stalls, you're only going to have 101. That's a big problem to me. And ordinarily, I would say, that's going to get a no vote from me, because it's not even close. But I don't think that's an issue, that there's enough agreement with me on to vote against your project. So I'm not going to stand out as being the lone vote again, because you're grossly underparked. What I would point out, though, is this is a live-work development. There's an intention that people are running a business in many of these ground-floor units. If they're running a business, they've got customers. Where are their customers going to park? Because what you're cutting into is the customer parking. You call it guest parking? Yep, it's for customers, and it's also for guests of the residents. There isn't a lot of that. And where are these people going to park? You know where they're going to park. But you're going to get my vote for this project, because I like a lot of the other aspects of it. Parking, I don't like one bit. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick. Any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Martinez?
Yes, thank you. First, I'll ask the maker of the motion. I know what you said, you're meeting with the applicant. I think that's great, but I'm wondering if you would want to amend your motion to include basically my offer to the applicant, which is, if they so choose in the future, before, let's call it, building permit, they can remove the nine parking spaces and have open space.
I, I would prefer that we have them come back if that becomes the case. If it's working, if it's turning out that it's either far overparked or not parked enough, that they come back and ask, even if it's a staff level. But I wouldn't want to include that in my motion.
That's fair. Okay. So, comments on the project. I think that this is a great project. I, like I said when I reported ex parte, I'm like, having to go back in my notes, that's how far back. We met in May about this project, and since then, it has evolved, it has developed. You took my comments, Russell's comments when we first met with you, the city council's comments. And I think that that is very reflective of this final design. The increase in live-work space, I think that's great. What it was previously, that was, that did not, that did not look good, I'll be honest. Now, this looks great. There is, even though there won't be a park where that service parking lot is, there's more green space than there was before. You have those parklets that take up those on the private street, and you have those ends of the paseos. I think that's wonderful, I think that's very nice. You have bike racks, not only outside, but inside of the project. The, time to channel Russell again, you have the frontages actually being activated with 16th Street having the entrances pointed towards 16th Street, and along the private drive, the entrance is facing that way as well. I think that that's wonderful, I think that that's fantastic design. So I'm very appreciative of you having taken all of those comments into consideration and developing the design for this project in a way that I think is agreeable to all of us. And I'll go to, now to, not just about the project, but about, you know, generally our process and procedures. Start with Measure Y. That, I think, did not stop you because of the urban plan that is in effect in this location. You had to include a live-work component in order to have this project. That's why you did not get essentially blocked from doing housing here. It'd be nice if you didn't have to do a live work, if you could just build housing, whatever type of housing you may want, whether it's the rental that I would prefer or the single-family homes that someone else would. For parking, I mentioned I am a big fan of the late Donald Shoup, and he advocated for removing minimum parking requirements wherever. So I think the reduction in parking from what you had previously proposed, that's fantastic. I think that this is a very walkable area, I think that this is a very bikeable area, and that it is a developing area. Your project is one example of that. Another example, not in building, but in just open space, is the Randall Preserve. Just a few hundred feet away, it'll provide hundreds of acres of open space. Just a few hundred feet away, it'll provide hundreds of acres of open space. We'll see what the school district does with their property, but I would hope that they also do open space. So I think this is a great area. I think this is a great project for that area, and I'm very excited to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will also be supporting this motion and glad to wrap it up, listening to everybody's different perspectives. I think that's actually a lot of the value that comes from commission and councils. You do get a wide breadth of opinions here, and it's good when we have some consensus. This is a very good project, and I think it's largely the result of the fact that certainly at council in June, we spoke and you listened. And it's not just a kind of pay some lip service and change out a tree. I mean, if you remember, that was the, the palm trees are the worst trees ever discussion. Who knew that was going to result? But you were able to address the real substantive concerns about the workspaces size, the design, the frontage at the streets, many of what's already been covered by my colleagues. And it is a better project for that. It is better for our community because of that. I have been up on this dais for a long time advocating for housing. We have seen very few projects of any significance. We've had large projects, we've had some very small projects. This, I hope, is hitting a sweet spot where we're going to see more development in this size, and we desperately need more of these. So I think it is, like I said, great for our community. The one thing I will offer is a suggestion, and I very much like the cul-de-sac with the specimen tree. I see you've got a California sycamore proposed there. I highly encourage a multi-trunk if you can consider that. It's much more of a sculptural element. I think it's going to add a lot, and it, I think, puts a fine bookend to the palm tree discussion. So with that, I will call for the question.
That motion carries 7-0.
Great. Well, that decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Commission, we're wrapping this up here. We have no old business and no new business, so on to departmental reports. Public Services, Mr. Gang.
No public reports, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, excellent. Mr. Drapkin, anything from Development Services?
No Development Services report. Thank you.
Okay, are we going to be three for three? Mr. Preziosi?
Three for three.
Okay, nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, we are adjourned.